It is seven o'clock. This is the second regular business meeting of the Ormond Beach City Commission. We are in commission chambers. It is October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and I hope you felt welcomed when you came in tonight by our Leisure Services Director, Robert Carrollon, and also our Police Captain, Chris Ruse. I'd like to introduce the folks who are sitting up in front of you tonight. To my right, your left, is our Recording Secretary, Taylor Lockhart. Next is our City Clerk, Susan Daederis. Next is Commissioner Dwight Selby from Zone One.
Good evening, everyone.
Then we have Commissioner Troy Kent from Zone Two.
Good evening, everybody.
To my left and your right, our Deputy Mayor and Zone Three Commissioner, Susan Persis.
Great seeing everyone this evening.
Commissioner Rob Littleton from Zone Four. Our City Manager, Joyce Shanahan. Assistant City Manager, Claire Whitley. City Attorney, Randy Hayes. And way to my left and way to your right, we have Police Chief Jesse Godfrey and Fire Chief Howard Bailey. For those of you listening online, I'm Mayor Bill Partington. At this time, if you would, please silence your cellphones and rise for the invocation given tonight by Evangelist John J. Seelin from Bethel Ministries, and that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. Father God, we thank you, we love you, we praise your holy name for your God of mercy and grace and love. Thank you for our great nation, God. In God we trust. Father, your word says blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord and the people whom you have chosen for your own inheritance. You've also said, if my people who are called by my name shall humble themselves and pray and seek my face and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, I will forgive their sin, and I will heal their land. Father, we ask for the healing and the restoration of our entire great country. And thank you, Lord, for our city of Ormond Beach, Lord God. Thank you for these precious leaders and all the residents here, Father. Lord, we love you, we submit to you, Father. Even today, I pray that you lead and guide the leaders with the wisdom and also the people with understanding to take godly decisions and for this leadership to continue, Lord God, to glorify your name, protect all of our families, all of our residents. We also think of all of those people in Fort Myers and Naples and other places, Lord God, that are affected by Hurricane Ian. We pray for restoration. Thank you for doing it, Father. We ask it in your precious, holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're gonna start the fun part of the meeting, or the more fun part of the meeting, and if I could have Trevor Hamilton come up and join me. Bring your family if you want. How are you, sir? I'm gonna present Trevor with a proclamation, and I'll ask him to hold that so everybody can see it, and then I'm gonna tell you a little bit about what he did to earn this recognition. Whereas Trevor Hamilton and his family are longtime Ormond Beach residents, and Trevor is a Special Olympics athlete, and whereas the Special Olympics program provides fundamental activities for children and adults with differing physical or intellectual abilities to become athletes, the Special Olympics provides these athletes with a variety of year-round sports for continuation of physical fitness, courage, joy, and friendship. And whereas Trevor represented Ormond Beach at the two thousand and twenty-two USA Special Olympics Games, Trevor has been bowling for the past four years and spent the last six months preparing and perfecting his skills for the USA Games, where he confidently bowled and won two silver medals, one individually and the other with his team. In the past, Trevor has won gold medals for basketball and volleyball, and Trevor's big dream for next year is to make it to the Special Olympic World Games held in Berlin, Germany. And whereas Trevor also competes in golf, volleyball, and his personal favorite, basketball, being a big basketball fan, Trevor had the opportunity to meet the players from his favorite team, the Duke Blue Devils. Trevor participated in the Embry-Riddle Steve Ritter Basketball Camp where he won the captain's award, and Trevor also, which will not come as a surprise, is part of the Bowling League at Ormond Lanes, which meets every Tuesday. And whereas Trevor attended the Halifax Academy and Seabreeze High School, aside from sports, Trevor enjoys going to the movies and out to dinner with his family. He enjoys taking care of and walking his dog Bailey, and even has an official dog walker T-shirt. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, on behalf of the entire commission of the city of Ormond Beach, do hereby proclaim October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, as a day to recognize Trevor Hamilton in the city of Ormond Beach and encourage all residents to join in celebrating in Trevor's extraordinary achievements and for bringing home two silver medals for our city. Congratulations, Trevor. [applause] All right. on behalf of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. You can bring anybody you want.
I'd like to bring Trudy.
Awesome. Yep, I'll give you that. And then I'm gonna read the proclamation. I'll let you say a few words. Whereas domestic violence is violent or aggressive behavior typically within the home involving the abuse of a member of one's immediate family. And whereas domestic violence poisons relationships, destroys lives, and shatters the bedrock of our society, the family, homes should be places of comfort and stability, where love and mutual respect thrive. Domestic violence erodes this environment, leaving many in potentially life-threatening situations. And whereas domestic violence affects everyone regardless of income, race, gender, or socio-economic status, still women do make up a disproportionately higher number of victims of domestic violence, with nearly half of female homicide victims being killed by a current or former male partner. And whereas Ormond Beach, Florida is a vibrant city, home to approximately forty-four thousand residents, and host to over five million guests who have the right to hope, freedom, economic security, safety, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas October is National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, we commit ourselves to ending this unconscionable cycle of abuse in our city. Every day in Ormond Beach, individuals and organizations play a part in supporting people impacted by domestic violence, providing services that include therapy, legal, education, housing, advocacy, and medical services. We commend the heroes who courageously answer the call for help time and time again. And whereas this month, we do not simply reflect on this unacceptable atrocity, we offer our compassion, respect, support, and protection to the victims and survivors while reaffirming our commitment to holding their perpetrators accountable and offering hope to those who currently reside in volatile and unsafe living conditions. We strengthen our resolve to ensure homes are places of refuge, comfort, and protection, not places of fear and abuse. Now therefore, I, Bill Partington, Mayor of the city of Ormond Beach, do hereby proclaim October two thousand and twenty-two as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Ormond Beach and urge all residents, agencies, and champions to support efforts that prevent and end domestic violence. Thank you. [applause]
Thank you. We kicked off this morning with a beautiful breakfast from the Beacon Center. We had a powerful speaker, and her name was Kristi Martin. She happened to be a boxer, and she was also a victim of domestic violence. And the pin that I wear, it's a purple ribbon that shows awareness of domestic violence and the remembrance of those that have been lost, just like the couple that was killed in Volusia County. So thank you so much for your continued support and the commission.
And thank you for all you do. That's an important... You wanna get a picture? You'll have three minutes to speak about any topics that are not on the written agenda, and tonight we start with Bill Denny.
Yes, I'm Bill Denny, ten twenty-seven North Halifax, and I wish to take this opportunity to thank the city for allowing us to use the Senior Center for the candidate forum that was held last week, and the intent of the forum was to allow the citizens to hear the candidates live and hear their position on many of the issues that affect our community. So, and the Senior Center was a great venue. You know, first we didn't know for sure, but it worked out really excellent venue. Also, I wanna thank Mark Schwartz, a former arts center, and his team helped us again in the audiovisual arena and helped setting up chairs and stuff and just the whole setup. So he really put a lot of effort into it and helped us that night. Also, wanted to thank the police presence, and Captain Roost did an excellent job of keeping everybody in line, the candidates didn't have a fight on the stage or anything. And Commissioner Persis, I know you missed all the fun and excitement, so maybe next time we'll get you up there.
Definitely.
But again, I wanted to thank the city for allowing us to use that venue, and it turned out great, and a worthy cause.
Thank you, Bill. Yep, and thanks to CFOB for all their hard work on it, Liz and Rita and you and the whole team I know have put hours and hours into it, so it turned out well. Appreciate you. Next is Travis Sargent.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Travis Sargent, four oh six North B Street. This is Evan in Everett. We have the best leisure services around. We just left T-ball fields, and tonight we'd like to just talk about the fish tournament. Evan caught his first fish, red fish, lost to a catfish, but that's okay. And Ike provided sixty-eight hot dogs. There was thirty-four participants, and just really would like to say thank you to Commissioner Kent for starting this over eleven years ago. It's very impactful, and unfortunately Ike's not here, but the boys just wanted to come and say something.
Thank you for the fishing tournament.
Awesome. Thank you, guys. And Clifford Mark.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here to thank a couple of people that helped me today with a minor problem compared to other people with the storm and that, Mr. Selby and Kevin from Public Works. I was having trouble having debris picked up in front of my house because everybody else on the street had it picked up, but there was confusion. And I've been a resident of Ormond Beach since nineteen eighty, and I went through the sidewalk thing on Northbrook Drive. Remember that? You know, when they had the sidewalk put in? That was the last time I was in one of your meetings here, but I appreciate your help and Kevin's help. That's all there is. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. All right. The minutes have been sent to the commission for review, also posted to the city's website. Any additions, deletions, corrections?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign, and we'll show those passing unanimously. The consent agenda, does any commissioner wish to pull any item off of the consent agenda?
Mayor, I would like to pull item O.
Motion to approve the consent agenda item absent item O.
Second.
Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Seven O.
Resolution number two thousand and twenty-two dash one forty-two, a resolution approving and authorizing revisions to the city's fee schedule for the cultural and recreational programs and facilities operated by the Leisure Services Department and setting forth an effective date. This is resolution number two thousand and twenty-two dash one forty-two, read by title only.
Just need a motion and a second for discussion.
I move approval of resolution number two thousand and twenty-two dash one forty-two.
Second.
And Commissioner Littleton.
Thank you, Mayor. You may recall, I've sort of been against this policy since the beginning. I fear with the rising cost of everything, if we don't at least stay, raise our costs for the rec programs to the inflation rate, we might not be able to provide such good services yet keep our taxes low. So short of that, I'm gonna be a no vote.
Understood. Anyone else? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
No.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and now would be the appropriate time if any commissioner wants to comment on any of the consent agenda items. Commissioner Selby.
Mayor, I'd like to comment on item J. That's the collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters. I noticed some of our outstanding firefighters here this evening, but I just wanted to let the citizens know that we just reached, well, we just approved their new contract for the next three years, and that contract includes over five hundred thousand dollars in pay increases for our firefighters over the next three years. And it also, I think this is particularly interesting, it provides an increase in the incentive pay for advanced life support. So if a firefighter has the advanced life support training, the old incentive was fifty-five hundred dollars, it's now eight thousand dollars. So that's a forty-five percent increase, or twenty-five hundred additional dollars per year. So the more of those ALS guys that we have out, guys and gals, my apology, that we have out there, the better the service is, and, you know, if you need that service at your house, you sure want one of those people on the vehicle that arrives at your home, or at your accident, or wherever the situation may be. So I'm happy that we resolved that one amicably and that we're compensating our first responders in a very fair, aggressive, and meaningful manner. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Persis.
Yes, I just wanna thank Commissioner Selby for saying that because I was gonna say something along those lines too, but that was absolutely perfect what you said, and I totally concur. So I also wanna comment on seven B. I was meeting with Joyce today and found out that Claire, our own very wonderful Claire Whitley down there, she basically helped save us some money on our health insurance. We were gonna have it raised eighteen percent, and she got it down to about five percent this year, which is huge. So I just wanna thank you for your hard work helping everybody. That was wonderful. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? We will move to public hearings. I'll open the public hearings and ask our clerk to read eight A, please.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-two. An ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section two dash zero one, established of Article One, establishment of zoning districts and official zoning map of chapter two, district and general regulations of the city of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone three parcels of real property totaling approximately thirty-three point thirty-one acres, generally located at Old Dixie Highway and Plantation Oaks Boulevard, Volusia County Property Appraiser parcel numbers three one two four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero zero two two, three two three nine dash zero three dash one seven dash zero one three zero, and three two three nine dash zero three dash zero seven dash zero one zero zero. From Ormond Beach PRD Planned Residential Development and Volusia County R dash three Urban Single Family to Ormond Beach SE Special Environmental, authorizing revision of official zoning map repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-two, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan, and I'll ask our Planning Director, Stevens Breaker, to speak very briefly on this item.
Good evening, Stevens Breaker, Planning Director. This is a request for a zoning map for a parcel on Old Dixie Highway, Old Dixie Highway and Plantation Oaks Boulevard. Earlier in the year, there was a land use amendment that went to recreation open space. The goal of this amendment is to make the zoning consistent, taking the existing zoning to special environmental. City staff is recommending approval, and the planning board also recommend approval with a five to zero vote.
Thank you, Stevens. Any questions for Stevens?
Mayor, I'll move approval of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-two.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. Eight B.
Ordinance number two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-three. An ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a planned residential development order for Tattersall at Timber Creek subdivision, authorizing a phased subdivision of a hundred and twenty-nine lots on eighty-four point one four plus acres to be located at three zero four North Timber Creek Road, parcel ID number four one two four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero two four zero, two zero nine nine Airport Road, parcel ID number four one two three dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero zero one two, and three seven zero North Timber Creek Road, parcel ID number four one two four dash zero zero dash zero zero dash zero two five zero. Establishing conditions and expiration of approval and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-three, read by title only.
Thank you, and again, Planning Director Stevens Breaker.
Stevens Breaker, Planning Director. This is a request for a planned residential development for the Tattersall at Timber Creek. The property is located along North Timber Creek Road and Airport Road. To the east, there is existing single family. To the south, there's single family, Pathways Elementary. To the west, there's an existing city parcel with a water tower, and then Deer Creek is also west of it. And to the north is large lot, single family, including Durn's Acres. The subdivision application process has three very distinctive processes. We are in the first one. This is a planned residential development. The unique thing about this property is already has a zoning. It has a zoning, but no development order. So there's no development order that goes with that zoning. That is the purpose of the action tonight. This is a zoning document that basically establishes the lot layout, establishes where the wetlands are, the buffers, recreation areas. It doesn't typically include construction documents, which is the next item, the preliminary plat. So this zoning document had a neighborhood meeting on August the twenty-third and was reviewed by the planning board on September the eighth, which recommended approval four to one. If approved, the next step would be a preliminary plat, which would provide construction documents. What you would typically see are stormwater plans, utilities, roadways, landscaping plans, compensating storage calculations. The preliminary plat also requires a planning board review and action by the city commission. Finally, if the construction is approved and goes forward, you would have a preliminary plat, which is a subdivision of land. So right now, today, we are at a zoning document with construction plans to be provided if approved. This individual parcel has about sixty-seven point five four acres of suburban low-density residential, which is a very unique land use category. The whole purpose of the land use category is to have lower density in the West Ormond area. So it requires this planned residential development for any subdivision over one unit per acre. So every property, creekside, pine, they all have to go through this process. The comprehensive plan seeks a density that is less than the urban core, typically between one point six and two point five units per acre, as a gross acre. So the goal is a low-density residential subdivision. This application, this project, or this property, has been reviewed four times previously. The last one was in January of two thousand and twenty-two. Concerns with that application included stormwater, flooding, traffic, and environmental impact. It was denied at one point seven gross units per acre. This is the site plan from the previous application. Area in yellows were the wetlands with the buffers around them. The areas in green were the natural preservation. Areas in blue were both the stormwater and compensating storage pond, and then the white areas were the lots and the roadways. The pink area was the recreation. So what's the difference between this application and that application? So there are several. The first is a reduction of units from a hundred and forty-three to a hundred and twenty-nine. The second is the work on the stormwater flooding issue. So they're in essence going into that second application of the preliminary plat, even though it's a zoning document. The project has proposed a fifty-foot swale from Leeway Trail across the city property, across their property, to connect to Groover Ranch. So this will ensure that all the historic flow coming from the north will be picked up in that swale. There are also less lots within the floodplain. So the area of the floodplain now has less lots than the previous application in January of two thousand and twenty-two. They have also submitted a stormwater management plan to our development review engineer. They've eliminated the sign waiver that was requested in the first application. A fourth item is they've increased the natural area to thirty-eight point five percent of the property, and they've also increased the recreation area for the project. So those are the key differences. Quickly walking through the project characteristics, the property is approximately eighty-four acres. The gross density is one point five three units. So if you remember that comprehensive policy, it's below the one point six. The SLDR density, so if you just took the area of the sixty-seven acres, is one point nine one, still within that comprehensive plan density. There are three off-site improvements that the project is required to do. One is the swale that we've already talked about. A second is a sidewalk connection that would lead to Pathways Elementary, so there would be a walking ability to connect to that school. And the third is a preservation of thirty-two feet along North Timber Creek Road to Volusia County for future roadway expansion if they ever need it. For the natural areas, the project has a forty-foot perimeter natural buffer around the project, and that is a minimum. There are areas, obviously, here, there's some here, and then a little bit here, that are greater than forty feet. All landscape buffers exceed what the Land Development Code requires. The natural preservation outside the wetlands are required to be twelve point six nine acres, so that's all the land required to be preserved, not in wetlands or buffers. Fifteen point seven seven acres, so almost three additional acres are provided. The recreational area shown here is doubled from what the Land Development Code requires, requires approximately twelve thousand, there are twenty-six thousand square feet of recreation. There are two project access points which haven't changed. One is on Airport Road, and one is on Timber Creek Road. The project wetlands, there are fifteen point one six acres of wetland with two point four acres of direct impact, leaving twelve point seven two acres, and there's also a preservation of three point nine acres of wetlands for the buffers. The project lot size, which has been a key issue, remains at eighty by one-ten. That is the suburban residential minimum, so they're meeting the lot size requirements. The areas that are in the floodplain are shown in two different types of gray. This area is not proposed to be impacted. These areas in gray are proposed to be impacted, so they will come in and they will fill these lots, and they will take them outside the floodplain. So when a homeowner buys it, they will be outside the floodplain. So when a homeowner buys it, they will be outside the floodplain. The, the volume of stormwater that would have been compensated with these floodplanes are now placed into the stormwater retention pond. So they're filling here and cutting here in order to ensure there's no impact to the floodplain. The signage, again, has been revised to meet our Land Development Code. The project attributes, the traffic, has a traffic study which shows it meets the jurisdictional requirements. There's a finding of adequate capacity for schools. Additional school review will occur with the plat. Both the city and St. John's require the review of pre-development and post-development in terms of rates and volumes. That will occur with the preliminary plat. The post-development discharge has to be equal to or less than the, the development and the pre-development condition, so they can't discharge more water and they can't discharge it faster. There are no variances being sought with stormwater and/or floodplain. It will meet all state and local requirements. The floodplain impacts were shown on the previous slide, and will be offset with creation of the compensating storage. Within your packet, there are several communications that were included. This weekend, we got one, another one from Ms. McLaren, which was sent directly to the commission, and Ms. Kate sent an email which we provided to the commission. Staff is recommending approvals of the zoning application. We believe it meets the criteria of the Land Development Code and comprehensive plan. The planning board recommended approval with a four-to-one vote on September eighth. If approved, it would go to second reading on November first.
Thank you, Steven. Any questions for Steven?
I have one. Steven, could you explain how the swale, the new swale, actually helps with stormwater retention and drainage?
It provides a, a, a dedicated out, source for the water coming north to get into the swale. It provides a defined source. It's very similar, if you recall, to the swale with Ms. Trescott's property along the story. So it provides a defined source for the water that's coming from north of the area to come here. One of the issues expressed last time was the concern with water around Leeway above it and on it. So there are inlets on either side to ensure the water can go under the roadway.
How much, how much storage does it add? Do we, stormwater storage does it add to swale?
So, again, we're, we're at, at a zoning perspective. I will let the applicants, if, if they've done the calculation, but all those calculations will be shown to the commission at the preliminary plat. So they'll have both stormwater and, and compensating storage calculations.
Anything else for Steven right now? Thank you, Steven. We will move to cards, and I have Ron Hooper.
Ron Hooper, Ormond Beach. I've been coming to the meetings when this was March side, as you all remember that. And it's, it's been changed quite a bit that it is, you know, a lot better than what it started out to be, that's for sure. But the reservations that some of us have, and especially the people that live on the other side of Timber Creek Road, is, well, if the picture was up there, but on the north side, where the road extends out and the lots extend out going north, where the swale's going to be located, there's still a lot of water that goes underneath the soil, that drains into the soil. And we're, and the proposal is to build homes there. We would like to see these lots removed, approximately ten to thirteen lots at that far northern end because of that reason. And because it's so close to Grover Creek. And that's really the only issue that I personally have. I know there's others that have issues with traffic, and I do too, but as one person said at the planning board or who's on the board, you know, I wish we'd have seen a little bit less of the homes. And that's what we're looking for, is a little bit less. And I hope you can consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Andy Zelinski.
My name is Andy Zelinski. I live in Southern Pines on Six Cross Vine Avenue. Me and my wife was concerned about this property for a little while. Anyway, to make a long story short, my wife sent out a letter to Tattersall and said, when she finished the letter, she said, concerned citizen. Okay? Because we're concerned. Next thing you know, Zev Cohen calls my son. My son sitting back there, his name is Alex Zelinski. You might know him as Alex Clark. Okay? Anyway, so instead of Tattersall sending message back to my wife about her concerns, she turned it over to Zev Cohen, who in turn, he turned it over to the city to show what he saw in the property and the concerns that he had. And my, my big concern is this. If we're going to send an email, answer the email. Don't push it up on somebody else. Business is business. And when we had the hurricane that went by, ridiculous the damage it did. And the creek that they're talking about this is going to run into, it was stagnant. Doesn't even move. So that's, that's my big concern. I appreciate listening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Elizabeth Zelinski.
My name's Elizabeth Zelinski. I live at Six Cross Vine Drive across Timber Creek Road from development, the proposed development. And I don't know if anyone has walked alongside the road, along those property, proposed property lines, but water is still very high. The water's not moving out of the creek. It's gone down some, but it's not moving. We have a retention pond behind our home. It almost broke its banks. That's just from this most recent storm. We've had days and days of rain. Never had this issue before. My concern is, is when all of this is paved over and all these lots are put in, I don't care how much of a hole you dig, it's still not going to stop the water from flooding in to this little tiny creek. And it's my understanding you can't touch that little creek because of environmental reasons. But when you pave everything over, there's nowhere for this water to go. And that's a big concern for not only the people in Southern Pines who's backstreet flooded, but also for the people on the other side of Airport Road. My concern's the water. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. And Kevin Julia.
Thank you very much. My wife and I are brand-new residents to Ormond Beach, starting in March of this year, and we live in the Southern Pines neighborhood. And kind of shocked, actually, by the amount of water we're seeing still on, on Timber Creek Road in, on both sides of it, actually, but they're, I know they're linked. And the quantity of water from this storm obviously was pretty high, but who's to say when the next storm is going to come by? And for sure, our neighborhood, we were locked inside of our neighborhood because we have lower cars for three days. So it's going to get worse if we have one pavement. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Just need a motion and second for discussion purposes.
I'm going to approve of ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty-three.
I'll second. Seconded. And discussion, Commissioner Persis.
I just had a question. I'm not sure who wants to answer it, but I do want to disclose, I, I met with the builder, Mr. Paytas, today and had a great talk with him. But I, I think what I was understanding is when you drive down Airport Road, if you're heading, I guess it's west, and you look toward the north, there does look like there's a lot of water there, a lot of water. From what I've learned is that that water is just in that area. Back, further back, it's not like that. The land is very different. And I just wanted, Steven, is that what you see too? When you, you have, I have not, I honestly have not walked way out there. So it's, it's very different in the back where most of the houses are going to go.
Correct. So if you recall, some of the, the maps that show the, the wetland right here is, is, I think, kind of what you're seeing. And then at the planning board, the applicant showed a number of pictures that showed the upland, the high and dry area. So Zev Cohen can certainly go through the characteristics of the property. But yeah, I think what you're seeing is, is the wetland right here, which, which has the water. Plus, the rest of the site has, has uplands.
Right. And I, and I, and I know this storm was like a, I, I was fortunate or unfortunate, I'm not sure, to be out of the country when the storm came, but it, it seems like this was like the storm of the century, rain, a rain, a horribly, horrible rain event from what, everything I've read and seen. And the likelihood of it being that bad could be, it happened again next year, it could never happen again. I mean, we, you know, we don't know that, so we can play what-if games a lot, I, I think. But I, I, what I did hear today that I liked was that there's, you know, huge buffers. It looks like there's, they're going to help with the, the animals and the environment, save a lot of, of the wetlands. I mean, just very minor parts of the wetlands will have to be filled, filled in from what I understand. So, I mean, I think that's all good. Also, what I wanted to ask was if, you know, Mr. Paytas, maybe we could put, include in the development order about your desire, you know, to maintain as many trees on that land as possible, and not like clearcutting, but take each lot by itself and look at it and keep as many trees as possible rather than just clearing everything out and then putting a few trees here or there. And that's what Mr. Paytas did tell me today, and I just wanted to mention that.
And that is in the development order?
It is.
As, as in the, I believe it's Exhibit C, under the special conditions.
Okay. I missed that one. Okay. Thank you. That's all I have right now.
Any other questions for Steven or comments on eight B?
Yes.
Commissioner Kent?
Steven, can you go back to the timeline, starting with two thousand thirteen? Yeah, there it is. So do we know who owns this property? Is, is Mr. Spino still the owner? I asked this last time, I didn't get a real answer.
Right. It's the Medorski family. So there's two, two limited liability companies that own it. These are the contract purchasers of the property.
Okay. So when I look back at this, you know, in oh-six, it wasn't thirteen, it was oh-six. It was approved eighty, eighty-foot wide lots, and then, in my opinion, I can tell you why I voted it down in two thousand thirteen, is that the developer at the time got greedy and wanted sixty-foot wide lots, and then wanted to try to do a mixture there. And then, just not too long ago, it was denied eighty-foot wide lots. I, I applaud the developer for shaving off thirteen homes. Can you go to the, the actual real picture now? There's a picture right there. There it is. So this, to me, like, beautiful aerial. So you see Pathways Elementary, can you light that up, Steven? See the Martha Stewart neighborhood? Can you light that up? See the, the city water tower there? And then you see the proposed Tattersall. But then look to the left of that, those are some trailer homes. I go back to Tattersall, and I look, go to the right of that, yeah, look at those properties. You know, I mean, wow. Okay? Wow. Just this, this visual jumped out at me as to what we possibly could be doing here in just a moment. And I'm not against this being developed at all. What I am against, because, and I'll tell you, I actually, not this time, but I met Mr. Durant out there months ago, and we went out on the property, drove out on the property. And there are some high spots, absolutely. And they're extremely knowledgeable about the types of trees that will not grow in a wetland. So guaranteed, there are some, you were asking, Commissioner Persis, I've been there, I looked at it. There are some very high areas, and it's, it's not wet. Unfortunately for them, the optics of this, when you're on Airport Road, it looks very wet. And, you know, I, I told Mr. Durant and his group then that I worked at, at Pathways for fourteen years of my life, and when there was just a heavy rain, I would watch water flow over that property onto Airport Road into a storm drain for seven to ten days after the rain stopped. So the optics are not good, especially if I, if you lived out there. It's concerning. So the water, I heard you, ma'am, the water is a concern. But I'm going to tell you one of my big concerns that I think is equally concerning. And that is that there are two schools within a mile and a half of each other. And you individuals that live out there, the headache you have every morning and the headache you have every afternoon, and I'm going to put the blame where the blame should go, because they're both county roads. And when that county, four-lane Timber Creek Road, and then for whatever reason, a half a mile or so before Timber Creek got to Airport Road, they left it two lanes, I'm still scratching my head about that. And that's not your fault, development group. That's on the county. And I hope that somebody fixes that problem at the county level stat, because that, to me, is as big of a problem. Because I, I do believe that, because I was on the property, and I told you there's some, some high and dry areas, I do believe that the engineers are able to get that water where they would like for it to go. And those homes aren't going to flood, it's not going to put any water on anybody else's property. I do believe that. But what I do know is that that's going to not help that traffic problem, and that's going to be a problem. So unless someone can convince me up here, I'll let everybody know, I'm okay with the development, but I'm a no until the infrastructure is fixed. It's not your problem, it's County of Volusia problem, and it needs to be fixed by the County of Volusia, and it needs to be fixed right away. So that's why I'm a no unless someone up here or the applicant can change my mind, Mayor. That's Ryan.
Thank you, Commissioner. And did you ever get an answer to the who owned the property question? I felt like you got the same answer.
Yeah, it was, it was the same answer, which was, I don't know if Mr. Spino still owns it or not, and I just, you know, I mean...
And it doesn't necessarily...
He does still own it? No, he doesn't. They're shaking their head.
He, he was a contract purchaser, too. It's the Medorskis. It's the very first part of your staff report, which I can pull up if you just give me a minute.
I'm just glad that I'm not the only one that was confused up here about the answer to it, because I didn't like that X number of years ago. I felt like it was a bait and switch, and I don't think it's fair to the residents of Ormond Beach to have that type of dealing. It doesn't feel good. You don't leave these, these chambers and go home and go, that felt nice. You know, instead, you're like, ouch. You know, that wasn't, that wasn't a good way to treat people.
So the staff report in, in the introduction says it's owned by Timber Sky LLC, Enclave of Timber Creek LLC. Those are the property owners. Those are the Medorskis. Mr. Spino was a contract purchaser. He does, he's not involved in ownership of this property.
And I don't have to say this, but it wouldn't change my mind one way or another if he was or not, I just wanted an answer to the question. That's all this was about. So, Mr. Spino, if you're listening to this, you know, I hope you're doing well, but it wouldn't have changed anything. I just wanted an answer to it. So, Mayor, with that information, I'm still a no until the infrastructure gets fixed.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mayor.
Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, thank you. We had several comments tonight about flooding, water levels, compensating storage. I wondered if the consultants, you know, or the developer himself could address some of that and maybe help everybody understand how compensating storage works and, you know, how the, what, what's going on with, with Groover Branch and, you know, just kind of fill us all in on that.
Thank you, Commissioner Selby. For the record, I'm Mark Watson-Pall, from Cobb Coal, two thirty-one North Woodland Boulevard Land, here on behalf of the applicant, and...
Cobb Coal 231 North Woodland Boulevard Land, here on behalf of the applicant. And, um, you know, you, you've each raised a, a couple of, of questions and, and points, and I'm happy to, to kind of walk through. We've got a handful of folks here that, that are more experts than I am in, in some of those topics. Um, so I'll, I'll kind of pull them up if that's good with, with the commission. Um, first and foremost, I want to thank your staff. Um, they've been great to work with. We've tried to really take the, the messages we heard, um, from January to go out and work on the, the stormwater concerns. If you recall at the last meeting, we had a lot of folks here from Durance Acres that had concerns about what would happen with Groover's Branch and, and the potential for backing up and flooding, uh, their properties to the north. We worked extensively with them. That's where the swale came from. Um, Jim Patis has had a, a number of meetings, you know, with the neighborhoods there to kind of work through those flooding issues. Um, so let me, let me address stormwater first. And Dwight, you wanna get up or, or Randy, or both, uh, to, to talk through stormwater? And then we'll talk traffic, and then I'll, I'll wrap up a couple of other comments.
Uh, Dwight Durant was F Cohen Associates. To, to try to keep it brief, um, I won't repeat the things that I've told you before. Um, but unfortunately, we had a storm. But fortunately, from an engineering perspective, we had a storm. And if the police chief isn't listening, I'll let you guys know that I was out there during the storm to see what happened. Uh, I was out there Thursday afternoon. It was still raining. We were still, uh, taking on water. And, uh, and Troy, I was pleased to, to see some of the stuff that was, it was different than what we, you know, we tried to put it on paper and figure it all out. The residents see it. They put it all together. But really, we don't know. Well, now we do. Um, I've got pictures, uh, studied it. So what, what happens is the water from the west comes down Airport Road like a raging river, and it dumps onto the site through a couple of, uh, flumes. And, uh, the water on the site during the storm stayed two feet below, um, Airport Road. And it was then being transported and then into, um, to the, to the east and to the creek. If you look at Leeward Trail, uh, Leeward Trail, the water was actually discharging from the city site towards the west, towards the Martha Stewart site, um, until you got further to the north. And then right where we're proposing, believe it or not, where we're proposing the swale, it was massively discharging back to the east at that point in time. So if the swale stays where it's at, it's gonna pick up all that water. It's gonna prevent it from working its way through the city site towards the south and, uh, then coming onto Airport Road and then circling back around. Uh, if we put it there, it'll be a direct discharge. It'll help dry out the city site, and it'll keep Airport Road safe. So Susan, what we were trying to do is, um, and, and Rob, we were trying to create a conveyance, not storage, but a conveyance, to where the water didn't flood everything on its way going to the creek. So the, um, the swale would serve its purpose, uh, in that regard. Uh, the other thing that, um, that I noticed out there was the property did not flood. It flooded where it's supposed to, where the wetlands, uh, are at. But it did not get, it did not peak up over the, uh, over the road. And I can't tell you for sure that it ever did it. I was only there for a short period of time. I didn't want to get in trouble, so I took my pictures and, and, um, got out of there. So on the Water Management District website, they have radar and they, they, uh, tabulate the amount of rainfall there is. So we don't have gauges out there, but this site took on, uh, fourteen inches of rain, uh, over a period of, of that, uh, Wednesday and Thursday. Now, probably the rain was condensed to twenty-four hours, but if you use forty-eight hours to be safe, uh, a three-day, one-hundred-year storm per the DOT is fourteen inches. So this was in two days, and so it was far more intensive by two-thirds, um, or fifty percent more, uh, than, um, a hundred-year storm. Now, I know we throw around these hundred-year storms, twenty-five-year storms and that kind of thing, and they happen all the time. But if, if you look at it, and then this is important, so I'm gonna explain it the best I can. So you look at this big Category Four hurricane that comes through, hundred and forty-five, forty miles an hour winds. Well, does everybody get the hundred and forty mile an hour winds? No. It's just on the wall, just a small area. And that's why insurance is like that, and that's why we designed to it. We, we play the odds that we're not gonna get that wall. But if you go five miles west or five miles north, they got a ten-year storm. They didn't get anything. It was just hit right here. So next, next week, you might read Palm Coast gets a hundred-year storm. Well, we're getting hundred-year storms all over the place. Not really. We're just getting them in certain locations. Uh, ask Port Orange how they feel. They, they had twenty inches of rain in, in most of their locations. So, um, we designed to the statistics. We follow the science. And, and so for getting the, the year stormed, if we get fourteen inches of rain, and to my knowledge, I, I tried to arrive around in the, um, the adjacent neighborhoods, I didn't see any water in homes. So let's define flooding. We've heard a lot of people say there's flooding. And what I've heard from Port Orange, through New Southern Beach and everywhere else, the water was in the road. That's not flooding. That's where the engineers want it to go. It first fills up your pond, overflows into common areas, goes into the road, and then leaves the site. Does not get into the homes. If it gets in the homes, then we got flooding. So Southern Pines, they had an engineer design the same thing. To my knowledge, it did not get in the homes, stayed in the roads like it was supposed to. And then when the creeks go down, the roads go down. That's how it is supposed to be designed. And, but the optics are, oh my gosh, we had flooding. And if it gets any more rain, it's gonna be in my, my house. But trying to dispel that theory, uh, and those bad optics. So that's what occurred there. If there's a specific question, I'd be glad to answer it, to tell you how we're doing compensating storage and all that. But I'm an engineer. I've talked a lot already.
I have a question. Those lots that are, um, on the, I guess the flood zone, there's, there's several, I guess on this corner back here, I'm looking, I, if you could put that picture up.
The north end?
Yeah. Yeah, right here, right in that area. So were you out at that property? Did you see what it looked like there?
I didn't, I didn't go on the property. It was still blowing pretty hard. But I went up, uh, Timber Creek Road. So you can't see that, you can't see that part. The, another concern with the flood zone, the flood zone looked massive area-wise, but it's only very shallow when it gets up there close to the upland areas. So we calculate the volume, not the area. It's three-dimensional, not two-dimensional. And that's why we do the compensating storage. So if we fill, if it's, if it's only two inches deep, it's not a big deal. If it's four feet deep, it's a big deal. It's hard to compensate for it.
Right, right.
But by, by, actually, that's a very good area to develop because it's already pretty high.
Right. And, you know, I appreciate your mentioning the flooding, because when we say flooding, I, when I hear flooding, I think flooding my house.
Yes.
You know, but streets, I mean, growing up here, I was born and raised here. Street, the street in Bernice Beres High School floods.
We design streets for a ten-year storm, which is a three-inch storm.
So, so, yes. So it's better to go in the road than in the house. And that's typically what, what we have, unless you live out on Chocky Drive or some of those places that have serious issues.
A little different story.
Um, I just wanted to comment about that. Thank you.
Commissioner Selby?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Durant, I just, um, could, maybe you could just give us a little thumbnail on compensating storage, like how it works, what it means, you know, and then also maybe a little more detail on the swale. And, uh, specifically, I was thinking about the Durance Acres folks, because it's my understanding that the swale will actually help the water that's coming from the north in Durance Acres that flows down towards the city property. This will actually allow it to get across Leeway Trail to, uh, Groover Creek.
Correct. To, to address that first, um, so the area is tremendously wet. Um, when I say tremendously wet, it is just flat, and the water doesn't get out. So if, using an analogy, if you, if your front yard has got water all, all the time, and the road is a foot lower, what are you gonna do? You're gonna dig a little swale and allow the water to get out of there. So when next time it rains, you got some capacity in your yard. That's exactly what we're doing there. We're just getting the water that sits, that is problematic and doesn't have storage. That's the same thing with the retention areas. Same thing we did in Central Park. We lowered the ponds.
And there'll be a, there'll be a culvert underneath Leeway Trail?
Yes. There isn't one now, and now it, now it goes across.
Right. Or it's blocked by the road until it, it, it can't get to the east, right?
That's correct.
Because the road sort of blocks it until it gets high enough to go over the road, right?
That's correct. And so that will tend to dry out the, the west side
Right.
of Leeway Trail. The compensating storage, the way that works is, is you take a hundred-year storm, and that's the number that we use, and there's an elevation already defined. In fact, our, our, uh, area of compensating or of floodplain is far bigger than the FEMA map, because they give an elevation, and we use our actual topo and spread it out to wherever, whatever, whatever's under that, we consider floodplain. So our, our rendition of floodplain is probably twice as big as what FEMA says. So we're conservative in that regard too. So when, when that area has a thirteen-inch storm, which is a one-hundred-year storm, it floods up to a certain area. And we have to respect that, because if you don't let it flood there, then it's gonna flood someplace else. And so when we fill in that area, we dig out an area right here, and it goes right there, and it doesn't go someplace else. So it's tit for tat. You just, whatever you fill, you cut. And you have to make sure it's hydraulically connected and close enough to where, you know, it's, it's, over here, if you dig a pond, it's not gonna help somebody over here where you fill it. So you ought to put them close together. So, excuse me, what we did was, even though we're not required to do it at this stage, we want to make sure that, we're proving that we can do what we're say we're doing, that we're promising to do, is we did those calculations. And we showed how much we're filling, and we're filling a lot less now versus the last time I was here. And we calculate that. And then we dig the hole to show that here's where that water is going to go. And it's measured from the groundwater, whatever dirt was taken out from the surface of the dirt to the groundwater table. So you can dig twenty feet, it doesn't really help. It's only that part that we get the, uh, the, the credit for. And we oversized it. So that's the story behind that. Does that help?
Can I ask, I'm sorry, you, you said you oversized it?
We oversized the compensating storage.
By how much?
Sixteen percent.
Now, now we know who does the work. The guys in the back.
The person that did the math. That's right. Um, so I think, I think that, you know, with regard to stormwater, um, if you've got any other questions, I also, um, we, Commissioner Persis, you mentioned, uh, some of the pictures that we saw, we showed, or some of the visits we had. I do have those pictures here if you'd like me, for me to run through those as well, because I can maybe ask Bill White to come up, because Bill was the, um, you know, kind of put these pictures together, and it shows kind of what the upland areas are throughout the property. Because it does, uh, to your point, Commissioner Kent, because you have a wetland area right here next to Airport Road, you see the water there.
Right.
Um, and so, um, you know, we, I think back in January, when we were working on this before with the higher density, um, we went out and, and, you know, went and took some GPS points through the property. So if it's good for the commission, I'll show you a couple of those pictures here, so we can kind of go through and make sure that everybody, you know, kind of recalls that the upland areas here. So Bill, do you wanna come up and walk through this? Since you were the photographer. Um, while he's coming up, I do want to just mention, you know, we, we've heard a lot through the past year about the 2006 rezoning, and about how the density that was here, you know, on the property during the 2006 rezoning really was, kind of what everybody said, you know, that was probably right. Um, well, we, one of the things we went back and looked at with the 2006 rezoning was, that was only the southern portion of the property. So while it was sixty-eight lots, it was only the southern portion of the property. So when you actually compare the, the acreage, or the density, so what we're showing with this plan is 1.53. That 2006 was 1.47. So point zero five difference. And you can actually look at, so here's the, the current concept plan. There's the Marshside Plan that was approved with those sixty-eight acres. So it's, it literally is just the southern portion of the property. The northern piece wasn't part of that rezoning. Hence, there was a lower lot count. So we actually tried to conform this very much to what everybody said in 2006 was the thing that, that seemed to be right for the area. Eighty-foot lots, much more, uh, buffers, much more green space, open space. And, um, you know, that density that was about a hundred and twenty units less than what the comp plan carrying capacity is on this property. But, um, I think very consistent with what the features of the property dictate. Bill, you wanna?
Sure. So you're gonna show us those holly trees? Is that what you showed me? Was that right?
The holly trees are wetland trees. I showed you
You showed us those two.
sand pines and live oaks and...
That's right.
So we, the, the property on the left, it shows the whole property. And from Airport Road, that is what you see, is that wetland that runs up, uh, through the middle of the property. But the property really is kind of perched, I don't have a, a topography map, but it's perched on the left side, and it's flat until that field road, and then it drops off into Groover Branch. So there's a lot of topography on the site, actually, even though it seems flat when you see it from both roads. So going up that field road, we see trees that are definitely not wet. Uh, the sand pine over on the right side is a whole, uh, grove of sand pine and southern red cedar. Neither of those will grow in a wetland. Um, wetland trees are things like cypress, holly, um, lava lolly bay. And we do have those on the site, but they're focused around the, uh, wetland. Moving up a little higher, there's some southern red, uh, magnolia. That's a very nice upland plant. Oh, the American holly. You're, you're right. It, not the Dahoon Holly, but the American Holly. So that's in the picture on the right. That's up there on the top of the hill. Longleaf pine is also a, a upland plant as you get further up the, uh, field road. And then we have myrtle oak. That's a scrub oak. That really, uh, occurs in sand hills usually. So as you move further, it gets more xeric. That's called dry versus hydric. Wetlands are hydric. So this is a xeric habitat as it moves up through the field road. And then finally, sand live oak. That's another very dry live oak. It's a variety of live oak, but it's in the sand hills instead of, uh, along the edges of wetlands. So there's fifteen acres of wetlands on the site out of eighty-four. We had them inspected by the Water Management District and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. So there are no more wetlands out there. That is the extent of the wetlands on the site.
Any other questions for Bill or, or on the pictures that we just showed? I thought those were helpful last time around as well. And, and I think the planning board, who, who, you know, again, ultimately recommended approval of this plan, did not see this before. Um, they didn't see this when this went to them back in December of last year. And so I think this was very helpful for them to put it in perspective as well. Um, okay. So we've talked, uh, about, uh, stormwater, talked a little bit about the onsite conditions. Um, Commissioner Kent, with regard to the comments about traffic, I have Katie Deering here. Um, I, I think if I pull Katie up, what she's gonna tell you is we've met all the standards, right?
Right.
That, that are there now. But that's not the important thing at this point in time, I think. And, and let me offer you this, this thought. Right now, we have property that has zoning that doesn't have any ability to do anything with it because of the way your system is set up with the SDRC and then, and the requirement for a separate development order approval. Um, we have done the analysis that's required to this point. But approving a development order for the site does not vest the site. It doesn't vest it with the ability to move forward with development. It just says, here's the maximum number that you can move forward with. You still then have to come back through both the city and the county process to determine concurrency at the time you go through the preliminary plat process. And so while, right now, we can say, we've submitted all the required traffic analysis. It's gone through the county review and the city review. It meets the standards. It meets the state law, um, with regard to concurrency review at this point in time. Um, I a hundred percent agree with you. We need to be able to, to work to fix that road system. But I can tell you from working everywhere, you know, in almost every municipality in Volusia County and, and the unincorporated areas, the only way that we're getting things done with regard to moving forward with those types of improvements is through collaboration. We have some road systems in Daytona, in Deland, other parts in the county, in Orange City. Um, we are working hand-in-hand with the county and the cities to fix those issues with development projects as they move forward. And so that's, I think, the opportunity here is you still have the, the concurrency, um, you know, determination that has to be made at preliminary plat. And at that point in time, you have funding coming in through proportionate share. You have other projects that are, that are contributing into this area with regard to the funding for that roadway. We need to make that road a priority from the county standpoint. Um, I absolutely agree with you. If you could just make that final connection, you could make a whole lot of, of difference. And you're right. This is a really unique area in that you've got two schools that are so close to each other. Uh, you know, I've, I used to live next to Citrus Grove Elementary School and over in Deland. When that school first opened up, it was a nightmare. We just had one school. Um, and so here, it absolutely makes it a, a completely different traffic pattern. Um, but we have the tools to work with, with the city and with the county moving forward from here to try and work to resolve that. Um, and, you know, I can tell you what we have done with, with this site. And I think we, we detailed this, you know, in the, in the last hearings. We have reserved all of the right-of-way that the county needs to, for the future expansion of Timber Creek, all the way running up the north side of the property. I think there's a thirty-foot dedication of right-of-way, if I remember that number correctly. Is that right?
Thirty?
Thirty-two feet. 32 feet. All right. So we have a 32, which is what the county had requested for us to preserve. So we, you know, when we talk about the 40-foot buffer minimums that we've established here, that's outside of the 32-foot right-of-way dedication that we're providing so that we can help be part of that future planning for the road network. Everything that has been requested with regard to those road improvements and road dedications we've worked with everybody on. Last thing, I think we mentioned before, but in an effort to try and cut down on some of that traffic, we also are extending some of the off-site pedestrian facilities. So while there currently isn't a sidewalk that goes all the way up along the city property up to tie into pathways, we have agreed to provide that as part of this development order. And so we're trying to not only, you know, work with the county and the city to provide for that future planning, we're trying to provide for those immediate connections that will, you know, make sure that this neighborhood has the opportunity to use a sidewalk to get to the school for the extent they have those kids.
And, you know, should this move forward, I can visualize a crosswalk across the street in the mornings, you know, to get those kids on the other side of the road.
Absolutely. And I don't recall whether there is one right now. I know at the last meeting at Leeway, we had a lot of discussion about people parking along that roadway. If you remember, in January, I think we had a couple dozen people here, you know, talking about this. But, you know, we've tried to obviously meet and address as many of those concerns as we could. I think that's a good idea. I was in Deltona last night talking about a very similar issue with Deltona High School crossing over to some of their commercial areas that they planned. And they, you know, again, we sat down with the county and the city staff to say, what makes the most sense here, and let's plan it. Let's put it into our development.
And, you know, as far as, you know, where there's a school, there's traffic. I mean, you go on Granada and Tomoka Elementary is, you know, starts in the morning and ends in the afternoon, it's gridlock right there for about a half a mile for, you know, that time period. It's annoying. I mean, if you're caught there, you know, you've got to wait on the light two or three times, but, you know, it's just what it is. More people are dropping their kids off there. You know, there's variances out there, a lot of variances, and parents have to pick their kids up and drop them off. So I, you know, I don't want, I'm leery of making that one of the reasons that I wouldn't, you know, vote for this because I think the county does need to fix it. I think they ran out of money back in the day, Commissioner Kent, right there, which that's what happened. I think they just ran out and stopped and then it just kind of, everything just stopped right then. And it does need to be fixed, you're absolutely right. So just wanted to make just a few comments.
Yeah. And you triggered something I was going to say, oh, I was going to, Sands Luster, when Sands was at the planning board, to your point about the traffic, you know, one of the comments that he made with regard to the school and the impacts that it has is for 15 or 20 minutes, you have an amazingly congested area. You know, that peak time when everybody's coming in because you do have more kids being dropped off versus coming in on the bus. But it's really kind of an anomaly in the context of the overall, you know, way that we look at the AM and PM peak times. So, yeah, the schools do, you know, create something. We're trying to do what we can do to help resolve that. The ultimate, you know, test is going to be what, you know, what's the condition when we come back with our concurrency requests at preliminary plat for this development? And that's when you've got the ability to, again, say, if you don't meet the traffic standard, you're not approved.
Commissioner Kent. Yes, and someone earlier, it might have been our staff or someone said, the Tattersall project is better than it was when it came before us. And I'll just say, that was because the commission said no.
Absolutely.
And I just wanted to get that out there. And then to you, Mr. Watts, I'll just tell you this, I, you know, we know each other just from events like this, but your client did a really smart thing by hiring you. You're excellent at what you do. Your demeanor is calm and you do a really phenomenal job. You speak fluently, you don't hear any ums or you're, you know, stammering. You've done your homework, so I just wanted to say, I wanted to give you a compliment. You've done a great job. And the team that's here, they have the answers and they're ready for it. But I'll tell you, you've been talking to a lot of people in this county lately about infrastructure failures. And there's two, and I'll just briefly talk about them because one's not in our city, but the little LPGA Bridge is an epic failure.
Right.
And for the county, I just heard now, I don't know why they didn't finish it, but I guess they ran out of money. Epic failure. They failed the residents of Ormond Beach in Volusia County, and they failed the residents of Daytona Beach in Volusia County. Especially when you've got over $300 million in your savings account, county of Volusia, okay? So I'm scratching my head how Daytona Beach could allow X number of thousands of homes and building more homes now when they have a failure of a two-lane bridge at LPGA. So I'm just saying, you did a great job, you've done a great job, I think your project is much better. I get one more bite at this on the first, and then, you know, on Ormond Beach, I'll say goodbye after 19 years. So it might be a moot point. But I can't approve this when I've been screaming about, why would Daytona Beach allow more, more, more when they don't have the infrastructure fixed? As soon as the infrastructure is fixed, as soon as the county does their job and fixes the problem on Timber Creek Road, absolutely. Perfect, let's rock and roll, welcome to the neighborhood. But for me, until then, I'm a no. I haven't heard the mayor talk about it yet. It sounds like, I'm reading the room a little bit, there might be a few yeses, but I just wanted you to know, that's why, that's why I'm a no right now.
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Kent? Commissioner Seltzer? Or, I'm sorry, Dwight, the other Dwight.
I'm not sure which Dwight, I don't-
You're the other one.
I just wanted to respond to that. Just a outside-of-the-box way of thinking is, so I think you'd agree with me, the school has a certain capacity, right? So if we put the kids next to the school, that means that the traveling students will no longer come there, that will reduce the traffic. And the way that the system works is that the way that we build the roads is usually from developer income, so there's proportionate fair share and impact fees, and I hope when your own county council, you fix this. But those fees can be designated towards that road. The right-of-way's there, the plans are done, they just need the money. So you take the proportionate fair share of money that comes out of here and assigns it there, which we have the ability to do undermined. That brings that improvement a lot closer.
I appreciate that comment, if you don't mind, Mayor, if I can respond to that.
Please.
I appreciate the comment. Don't know that I 100% agree with it, but I'll just say this. Another interesting fact, so there will be plenty of people that live in this development, Tattersall, that don't have children going to school. But they will be complaining about the traffic two times a day that they just moved into because I'm dealing with it in the same area that I was just talking about. I just spoke to a really nice lady, and she was going on and on and on about it. And I said, ma'am, how long have you lived here?
Yep.
Because the development hasn't been long. And she said, two years. I said, so let me ask you, nobody can come after you? And she stopped and scratched her head and said, yeah, right. Nobody can come after me.
Right.
So the people that are going to move into these homes, many of them are going to complain because of the failure on that road, Dwight. One of the reasons I struggle with the no is I don't like penalizing the last guy or last girl in.
Right.
You know, look at what's around there, you know? And now you guys, and now you guys are the ones that are hearing a no from me, but I've taken a hard stance on, if the infrastructure can't handle it, and I think the infrastructure can handle it most of the time, it's just five days a week, Monday through Friday, for an hour a day, 30 minutes in the morning, 30 minutes in the afternoon.
Right.
And if you don't happen to go out at that time of day, then it's a moot point. But if you do, if you happen to live out there, you're not happy because I've lived it and I've seen it. And like you said, I mean, you lived over in Deland where your house was. It's a tough go, you know, and, you know, it's a quandary because, you know, we need, we need these incredible schools that we have.
Right.
And parents want to drive their kids to school. Listen, I get it, my boy went with me every day.
Well, you know, and the interesting thing is, things haven't been made easier for you at the cities because, or the county frankly, because, you know, the way that concurrency worked under the original Growth Management Act, you had the ability to simply say, there's no capacity there, we can't, we're not going to approve it. And then with the revisions to the concurrency statute that occurred starting in 2011 and 2013, you know, that shifted. And it's appropriately shifted in some ways because backlog, to your point, the, you know, the holding somebody who's here now responsible for those sins of the past, backlogged conditions are specifically recognized in the statute as not responsibility of the current person standing at the podium, right? They're the responsibility of the people who are already here. And one of the things that, you know, and this is interesting, we got into some of the discussions we had with the, you know, a couple of years ago, getting into, what's our program called? The, the one that you guys just hosted at the community center, where you're trying to get collaborative discussions to Obi-Look.
Obi-Look.
Yeah, it was, it's, sorry, I'm drawing a blank on it right now. But, you know, one of the interesting things that we got into that is, in that discussion, nobody really recognized that that backlog issue was there. And how do you fix that? So that's one of the other things. Again, what I think you see us trying to do, that works in this area on a daily basis is make, you know, work with the cities, work with the county to make the dollars go as far as we can to fix the things that are there. And the things that make sense to fix, like a roadway that needs a half mile of paving. So.
Any other questions for Mark?
I have a comment-
Yes, sir.
-on transportation, and that is that I was at a bank today, South State Bank on Granada, and I was at the drive-thru, and there is a nursery school, I think it is, to the north of South State Bank there at Old Kings Road. And while I was in the drive-thru, Old Kings Road was completely blocked because there were, I don't know, 10 or 15 cars waiting in line to pick up their kids at that nursery school on the property next door. And so, you know, my first thought was, wow, they can't do that. And then I thought, well, what are they supposed to do? They're picking up their kids, okay? And they have to do that, right? And then I, and I'm listening to your comments, Commissioner Kent, and I, part of me whole heartedly agrees with them. But the other part of me thinks about, well, look, we got to have schools. And if we built roads that 100% eliminated the traffic jams that happen when schools go in and when schools go out, and let's face it, we have a cultural difference. I don't know any, when I was growing up, I never got a ride to school. I walked or rode my bike, okay? We don't do that anymore because I guess we're, you know, I guess maybe legitimately, parents are afraid to allow their kids. My older son, when we lived in, well, I don't, whatever, it doesn't matter, his first day of kindergarten, rode his bike. I mean, my wife and I were out there, we were going to, like, walk him to school, and he was already gone, he got on his bike and rode to kindergarten. Anyway, times have changed, and parents drive their kids and pick up their kids, especially if they're not in a bus, if they're not at least two miles away. I don't think we can afford to build roads big enough to not have a traffic jam for those times of the day. And the neighbors, you know, if you live right near a school, you got to kind of get used to it. You got to kind of figure it out, you got to have your workaround. And I remember one parent told me that, you know, I get to the school, this is in the pickup time, an hour early so I don't have to wait.
[laughing]
And I'm thinking, okay, yeah, that makes sense, right, okay. Yeah, all right. So anyway, so I think there's this, I think the transportation thing is, we will get another opportunity, or this commission will get another opportunity on it when the, when your preliminary plat comes in. But I don't think we fix it. And, you know, schools, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding, the school board doesn't have to go through this planning approval process. They can basically build a school anywhere they want, right?
Correct. They have a very, very light version of local-
Right. And the reason they do that is because they'd never be able to build a school because somebody would say, not in my backyard, you know, put the school, you know, five miles away so I don't have a traffic jam, right? And they got to build schools, you know, somewhere and spread them out as much as they can. So anyway, that's not a hang, the transportation is not a hang-up for me. I do have one question for you. This 32-foot reservation along Timber Creek Road.
Yes.
Is that, that's sufficient land, I assume, to four-lane Timber Creek?
That's the request. So when we're going through and designing, you know, a project like this, we have to coordinate with the county, obviously, since it's their road. And what they requested was that dedication. So what you'll see is when the preliminary plat comes forward, then that would be dedicated to the county for the ultimate expansion of Timber Creek.
And is that a gift? I mean, does the developer give that land? Or how, what are the economics of that? How does that work?
It's required as a dedication. It can be impact fee creditable under certain circumstances.
Okay. So they're not going to, the county's not going to write a check for that land?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. It would likely be an impact fee credit.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. So I think, and, you know, the other comment I want to make about that is, that's a lot of land. I mean, how far, what's the length of the frontage on Airport, I mean, on Timber Creek Road? Couple of thousand feet?
Somewhere in that range.
So say 2,000, 1,500 times 32, that's a lot of, it's a lot of land.
Right.
It's a lot of land to just basically give to the county. But what it shows to me is the developer's willingness to help be a part of the solution to the problem, okay? Because without that right-of-way, if they built right up to the property line, that right-of-way would be unbelievably expensive down the road. So they're part of that, they're part of the solution, doing their part to fix it when the county is in a position to actually build the road.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'll go last, and then we'll call the vote. As far as discussion goes, Commissioner Kent, you inquired, I'm a no on this still. I agree with you, it's much better than it was previously. And let me disclose, I met with Mr. Patus maybe six weeks ago, can't remember exact date, but we had a good hour-long discussion on the matter. And I, you know, in listening to everybody, reading the emails, looking over the planning board minutes, I believe there still are negative impacts that would adversely affect the safety and quality of life of our residents. As far as the flooding, stormwater issues, I'm not convinced. You just look at the '06 plan versus today's plan, and it shows, I mean, that's what they thought the best plan was then, it's changed substantially now. And men plan and God laughs is a phrase that I like to use. The chief knows that because we drove around during the hurricane, and despite your best efforts to control or direct flooding and stormwater, you don't always get the desired result. I don't think anybody can argue with that. The other thing is, traffic is atrocious out there. It absolutely affects the quality of life of our residents, and I hear about it on a weekly basis from people who actually live out there. And so, you know, to hear the plan that's been presented and to me not having the success, until somebody says no, nobody's ever going to fix it. And so it needs to be fixed beforehand, not afterwards or during. So I agree, it's much better than it was. I'd like to see it a little less dense. My number, I guess, in my heart of hearts was somewhere around 120. It's still a little more dense than I'd like. And so based on all those reasons and the record that's been presented, I'm still a no at this time. Anyone else, Commissioner, are you ready? Commissioner Seltzer?
Yeah, I made some notes on this. The current plan is 129 lots, the original plan was 143. The carrying capacity is 248. So this is, this is, you know, on density, it's a 10, they've reduced the number of lots from their original proposal by 10%. They're at 1.53 residences per acre, which is incredibly low. The stormwater, the Leeway Trail conveyance is a big deal, I think, and it's going to be expensive to build. And I think it is going to help Leeway, I mean, to help Durant's Acres tremendously. You know, removal of the sign waiver, you know, which I didn't have a problem with that anyway, I thought it was a really good-looking sign, but they removed it, you know, just to, so they don't need any special consideration there. 38.5% of the site is natural preservation. Almost 40% of the site is natural preservation, it's an 18 and 1/2% increase. The recreation areas are 130% more than code, 130% more than- The recreation areas are 130% more than code, 130% more than code, not 30% more, 130% more, the recreation areas. The six-foot sidewalk on, on Airport Road extends all the way past their property, across what is city-owned property, city-owned property, all the way down to leeway trail, so that kids will be able to walk from this neighborhood, if their parents allow them, or walk hand-in-hand with their parents, uh, to the school. Um, the school capacity, the school board has deemed that, yes, there is capacity at the school, um, there's only, only 2.44 acres of the 15.16 acres are directly impacted by this development, only 2.44 acres. All the landscape buffers are greater than code. Landscape buffers along Airport Road and Timber Creek are double what's required, they're 40-foot versus 20-foot. The requirement is 20 feet, they're 40 feet. To the north, they're double, on the north side, to those, uh, rural, uh, properties, they're 40-foot versus, the code is 20 feet. And to the west, they, which would be adjoining the city property, the code is, is six-foot. They're gonna put a 40-foot natural vegetation buffer there also, okay, which is six and a half times greater than code. They're gonna have architectural controls, so the homes will be good-looking, you know, because of the architectural controls. And my understanding is, the price of these homes is gonna be mid to, you know, to, I mean, for mid, mid to higher-end home prices, which is, I think, good for the community. Got planning board approval of four to one. Um, all the lots are 80-foot lots, 80 by, I think we were told, 80 by 110, uh, which some people think is really important. I'm not one of those, but, you know, for anybody who does, that, uh, this, this development will be served by city sewer and water, so there won't be any septic tanks out there. And because Groover Creek is considered a, a outstanding Florida water, they have to remove the, uh, they have to, uh, treat the, uh, nitrogen and phosphorus to a higher level than would be otherwise. And the nitrogen and phosphorus is what messes up the water quality, causes the, the algae blooms and everything else. And so they have to do that, which they'll, they'll, uh, contribute very little to, 'cause there won't be any septic tanks, but the water that's coming to them will get that additional. And also, you know, this is an infill development. This is a, when you look at the map, I mean, virtually everything around it is densely populated. That, by putting homes here, where the city services are already available, we, we eliminate sprawl, we reduce sprawl going out further west or north. So it prevents small sprawl, and it's really smart growth. And the, and the key thing for me is, we have a local builder-developer. We have a builder that's got a great reputation, paid us homes, they got a great reputation, they live here in East Volusia County, they're gonna do a good job, they're not carpetbaggers coming in from somewhere else, building a bunch of track homes, and, uh, and then blowing out and doing nothing for the community. These are people that we can trust, that we know, that we care about, so I, I'm a yes. I'm a yes on this, and, um, I, I hope there's two others that agree with me.
Anyone else?
I'll say something, Mayor. Commissioner Littleton, I voted against this project when it last came before us, and though I did not meet with the developer or his representatives this time, for the last application, I did meet with them and I visited the plot plan. So I denied, voted to deny last time, and since, they've come back with a reduction of units, they've removed the variance, and they've added a sway to help with the stormwater. So I don't have a justification in my mind to say no. I mean, I wanted to vote against this. I mean, when I, this first came up, we first gave our packets, I was like, you know, I wanted to vote against it, but I just don't know how I can justify it to myself. They've done as much as they can to make this project suitable for the community, so I'm a yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
No.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
No. 8C.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone two parcels of real property totaling approximately 7.73 acres located at 520 and 540 Flagler Road, Volusia County parcel numbers 3136-01-69-0020 and 3136-01-68-0020 from B-7 Highway Tourist Commercial to Plan Business Development, PBD, authorizing revision of official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-34, read by title only.
Thank you, Susan. I don't have any cards. I'll move for approval.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8D.
Ordinance number 2022-35. An ordinance authorizing the execution and issuance of a development order for a planned business development to be located at 520 and 540 Flagler Road to be known as the North Interchange, authorizing development of the property for business and storage warehouses, indoor mini self-storage, and outdoor RV and boat storage under certain conditions, establishing conditions and expirations of approval, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-35, read by title only.
Thank you. I don't have any cards on this one.
I'll move approval of ordinance 2022-35.
I'll second. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 8E.
Ordinance number 2022-36. An ordinance amending paragraph C, official zoning map of section 2-01, established of Article 1, Establishment of Zoning Districts and Official Zoning Map of Chapter 2, District and General Regulations of the City of Ormond Beach Land Development Code. By amending the official zoning map to rezone real property as a result of the comprehensive plan amendments that implemented the provisions of the second amended inter-local service boundering agreement between the City of Ormond Beach and the County of Volusia, authorizing revision of the official zoning map, repealing all inconsistent ordinances or parts thereof, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-36, read by title only.
I move approval of ordinance number 2022-36.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes, and we will close the public hearings, move to 9A.
Ordinance number 2022-37. An ordinance amending the City of Ormond Beach Comprehensive Plan adopted by ordinance 90-36 as previously amended by adding an objective and policies for flood risk planning in accordance with Florida Statute, Section 163.31782F, providing for transmitting copies of the notice and amendment to the state reviewing agencies, the County of Volusia, and any other local government or governmental agency requesting a copy, providing for public hearings, providing for conflicting ordinances, and setting forth an effective date. This is the first reading of ordinance number 2022-37, read by title only.
Thank you. Again, I don't have any cards.
I move approval of ordinance number 2022-37.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. 10A.
Ordinance number 2022-31. An ordinance amending the annual budget for fiscal year 2021-2022. By amending the general fund 001, stormwater utility fund 107, airport fund 108, local law enforcement trust fund 109, economic development fund 110, grants fund 116, capital improvements fund 301, equipment renewal and replacement fund 302, public safety vehicle and equipment fund 305, transportation improvements fund 308, facilities renewal and replacement fund 317, water and wastewater fund 401, vehicle replacement fund 408, renewal and replacement fund 409, and the general liability fund 504, and setting forth an effective date. This is the second reading of ordinance number 2022-31, read by title only.
Move approval.
I second the motion. Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Commissioner Selby.
Yes.
Commissioner Kent.
Yes.
Commissioner Persis.
Yes.
Commissioner Littleton.
Yes.
Mayor Partington.
Yes. And reports, suggestions, requests, starting tonight with City Manager Joyce Shanahan.
Um, first of all, I've asked Sean Finley to come forward to give us an update on our debris removal process. And once he's finished with that, then I'll review with you a separate slideshow on, um, some of our city facilities and what we are expecting as layer of damage.
Thank you, Sean Finley, Public Works Director. Just put together a couple of quick slides to get you all up to date of where we're doing. This is really the biggest thing that we've been doing the past week in Public Works, and, um, it's an ongoing process that will take us a little while, but I wanna get you all to speak with where we're at. I showed this slide two weeks ago, our hauler Crowder Gulf, Thompson Consulting is our consultant who's helping us to manage it. That's a very key component to this, this operation, to make sure that we get reimbursed for all the work that we're doing to, with this debris removal. Again, we began that debris removal on October 5th. This is a graph that shows quickly the debris we've moved, uh, collected by date, um, since that October 5th, and you see a steep incline starting last, um, last Friday through the weekend. We've been adding trucks as we've gone. One of the things, one of the challenges we have with this process is, unlike a lot of other hurricanes that hit Volusian, Flagler, Lee and Collier Counties, this hurricane hit the entire state, so there's a, there's a call-out for trucks all over. Um, the, the last truck that was certified by the, by Thompson, 'cause all these trucks are certified for, for, for this debris removal, where it was actually fabricated since the hurricane occurred. So they are out there making new trucks to help us to get this debris off the road. Yesterday was the biggest day for so far, 47,000, 4,760, um...
Cubic yards.
Cubic yards. To date, we've collected 31,908 cubic yards. We're estimating that we have about 200,000 cubic yards out there, so we've got a lot to go. Using that, that, that benchmark we had yesterday, 4,700 cubic yards, I just checked it before we came to the meeting tonight, there were still two trucks on the road, and they had about 4,300 cubic yards for the day. But using 4,500 cubic yards per day is, is kind of what we're hoping to have from this point forward, we will be completed by November 23rd. And that's key, 'cause it's day 50 of collection, that's day 57 since the declaration of the, of the, of the event, 60 days is, is what we need to get this collected in. It's also two days before Thanksgiving, so this is our goal. We wanna get this, we wanna get this wrapped up with this first pass before Thanksgiving, get, get everybody's life back to normal. Matthew took us 95 days, Irma took us 73 days. Um, these are the trucks that you'll see out there, they will all have this plaque, and if you look in the lower left-hand corner, there's that, that QR code, every time they stop for, 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 to pick up a load, that gets scanned. Um, they give us a report on a daily basis, and I've got copies of today's report, if anybody would like to have it, I'm, I'm gonna happily share it with you, to show you the progress that we're making. It's a three-page report. We also have access to their, to a database, to their, to their portal that shows a lot of things. It shows us where they're at, where they pick it up. Point A is where that load is picked up. Point B is our debris management site, so it shows the route that, that, that truck took, it shows what we're doing. Um, switch to this one, we can see that, that load picked up five piles. Um, so it's, it's, it's that detailed. They show a picture of the street that we picked it up. Would I, for one of my projects, ask for this level of detail? Probably not, not. Am I gonna make Thompson and Crowder Gulf do this? Absolutely, because that's the only way that we're gonna get fully reimbursed for everything that we're, we're doing here. So this is a good thing. It adds a little bit of time to it, but to make sure that we get all the money back that we can from FEMA for, for this operation. Again, 4,760 yards we did yesterday. Everybody knows what a dump truck looks like. 4,760 yards is 330 dump trucks worth of, 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 um, of, of storm debris, and that's what we did in one day yesterday. So, so we're, we're out there, we're doing our best. Um, I think that it, it's, it's a process, and we really appreciate everybody's, um, patience and cooperation. By the end of this process, weeks, that 200,000 cubic yards, this is what it's gonna look like. Phil Jackie Robinson, 27 and a half feet high. You know, that's a lot of debris out there, and so, um, you know, we, again, we appreciate everybody's patience, we appreciate everyone's understanding, and, you know, we're doing, we're, we're gonna continue to move forward and hopefully get to that date.
Thank you, Sean. Great job. So far, I know, uh, a lot of people are starting to call with concerns, and you guys are handling those.
Thanks.
In a fantastic way. We're ahead of where we've been on any other cleanup, uh, which doesn't make much difference to somebody if they're there and at a pile every day they get up, but, uh, we will get there, and thank you for that report. Commissioner Littleton.
Yes. Sean, can you, for the audience, say that we're picking up the branches and the such, we're not picking up the garbaged bag? That's...
Crowder Gulf is picking up the branches and, and, and the, and the unbagged and uncanned debris. Waste Pro is, is, is our regular hauler, they're the ones who are picking up that bag debris. We're, we're, you know, they're taking it a little bit longer than they have in the past, because there's a, a higher volume of that. We authorized an extra pickup last Saturday to help get those off the road. We're probably gonna do that again this weekend for, for an extra day, just to help get, you know, get them caught up, get them caught ahead. We don't wanna push them too hard, 'cause they've been working a lot of long days here as well, but an extra day, an extra eight-hour day isn't gonna kill them, it's not gonna kill us, it's gonna help get, get this whole process done quickly.
I have a question.
Commissioner Selby.
Sean, this is, uh, you know, might be out of your wheelhouse a little bit, but, um, and anecdotally, somebody told me this, that, uh, they had branches and they had, you know, like logs, tree, you know, big pieces of trees. And, um, that the truck picked up all the branches, uh, but wouldn't pick up the logs, because he was almost full. And the reason is, they get paid by volume, not by weight, and if he dumped a bunch of logs in there on top of the brush, it would, it would pack down the load. This is really kind of a, this is a FEMA sort of question, really. It's not really a question for you directly, but is that kinda your understanding of how this thing works, too? That they put the really hea-, they put the really heavy stuff, if they're gonna put them in on the very bottom, and then they put the branches on top of that?
It's not unreasonable to, to, for someone to do that, I guess, I guess, I, it's maybe not what I would do. Volume, volume is how they're, how they're auditing it, so.
Yeah.
I would hope, I would hope that, that everybody would be, would be behaving fairly, but...
Well, I mean, look, you can't blame them for doing that, but I mean, the, but they, but if you were doing that, if you or I were doing that, and we were running a business, you know, we would smash down as many branches as possible and get as many logs in there as possible, so we have fewer trips, and we get more stuff in, you know? We don't, we don't, we don't pay for a bunch of air, we pay for, you know, anyway. I just wanted to ask that. The other thing, I'm, I'm just curious about, pardon me?
Are they saving money on gas and, you know, man hours?
No, they get paid by volume. They get paid by the cubic yard, not by the weight at all. So, because they'd have to have scales and everything to weigh them, so they don't, but it's, it, it, it sort of rewards the wrong thing. And it's a federal, you know, it's a FEMA kind of thing, but anyway, okay. So the other question I have is, uh, bagged stuff, did, did, um, Waste Pro pick up bags last Wednesday?
They did pick up bags.
Were they, were they, like, limited? I mean, did they?
They, they've been working their...
Did they not take all your bags, or, oh, yeah, here comes, here comes Kevin Gray. There's the man who knows the answer to this.
Commissioners, Mayor Kevin Gray, Deputy Public Works Director. The, uh, the volume issue, the spotters are trained to look for fluff, so if it's all just branches and fluffy, then they reduce the load. So by putting the heavy stuff on it, it does compact it, but the volume that they get is an equal amount, even with the logs in there. even with the logs in there. If they don't pick up the logs, they send them back anyways. So they'll come back with a whole truckload of logs. So they do, they put it on top, so that it does compact the entire square cubic yard area that they have. So it's a game. Some of the contractors do play that game, but our monitors don't allow that.
Okay, great.
And they have them up on a tower, so they can see inside. So if it's not, if it's all fluff, they're only going to get a small amount. So it does equal out at the end of the day.
Great, thank you.
And regarding...
While you're up, what about the bags last Wednesday? Was Waste Pro not picking up, were they, like, limiting the number of bags they were picking up at an individual house?
They initially started to limit the amount of bags that they were picking up, and once that came to us, they were taking everything that was there.
Okay.
Some homes had a hundred bags, they would take fifty, and they'd come back on that Saturday to pick it up. But yes, any bags are out there, because we do have unlimited yard trash, they would pick everything up.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Commissioner Persis?
And just one last thing about the bags. The waste hauler Crowder Golf can't pick them up, because it screws up with the mulch.
Sean, I just wanted to commend you on this report. I just briefly leafed through it, and it's incredible what you're doing.
There's nothing, no credit for us. That's what Thompson does for us. That's why we chose them, because they are a very credible organization. We know that they're representing us and making sure that we get what we're paid for. And Kevin kind of made a good point. One of the things that, when you really dive deeply into that auditing page, you'll look and you'll see that each load, they're all over the board. Eighty percent full, sixty-three percent full. And you wonder, why are they coming back at fifty-seven percent full? It's because of that monitoring of what's the airspace versus what's the trash space.
Thank you for all you're doing. I know it's a huge job.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Yep, Joyce?
Yes, thank you. So we get this, I think it's a day delay, is that correct, Sean, the report? So, you know, we can send it to you every day if you want, or we can send it to you once a week. So you let us know how you want to see that.
I think every day is good.
Okay, send it to you every day. Sean will send it out to you. I just wanted to give you a quick update on our Hurricane Ivan City property damage. Do you have that? There you go. Now, this is just a thumbnail sketch of where we think we are at right now. Total damage at Bailey River Bridge Garden was about a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We had window damage, roof damage, ceiling tile, wood siding, and concrete slab. Andy Romano Beach, we expect that to be in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand dollars. The shade structures, we should get some insurance reimbursement for those shade structures, at a hundred and fifty. We have three separate sets of staircases that go down to the water, the beach. Those are a total of about a hundred thousand dollars. And the ADA ramp would be approximately two fifty. You have to build back in the current footprint that you have. I think, Randy, you talked about that at the staff meeting today. That'll be a ways out before that gets rebuilt. We had just finished it and it got taken away again. The casings had about a hundred thousand dollars' worth of damage. They had parking lot lighting.
Joyce, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind. Can we go back to the Andy Romano picture?
Yep.
So, we've been down this road before, right?
Yes.
So, building materials. Maybe we do... I'll tell you, you may not know it, but I used to surf all the time, all the time. As an amateur, number one in the North Central Florida District. I mean, I was into it. California, Pacific Ocean, has some pretty impressive surf. And when I was out in California, I noticed that the piers handle tremendous waves. And they're all concrete piers. There's no wooden structure. What was that?
It's a beautiful, I love the idea already.
Right.
Yeah.
So, the mayor used to say this term, I'm getting ready to say, ten-plus years ago, three words. Stop the insanity. Isn't that right, Bill? He used to say that? So, why don't we look at concrete pillars? Or down into...
We've had that discussion, and currently, I don't believe FEMA allow, FDEP doesn't allow us to do concrete there, but we're checking into that option.
Let's talk to people that can change those rules, because we just... This is, now, this is because of this storm that wasn't even a tropical storm when it came by us. But, you know, we have northeasters that hit us every winter. And those northeasters pushed that water up the beach approaches, and we're still in this quandary. So I'm just saying, future commissioners, there's three guaranteed in this room right now that are going to be up here, starting on November fifteenth. So, and, you know, sometimes I've been gambling, man, I'm going to say there's four in this room, but... Three guaranteed. And I'm just saying, for that future commission, think about that. Think outside the box. Let's quit putting structures up that are going to fall down again. Let's build something there with concrete pillars. Talk to whoever we have to talk to. There's always somebody that can change the decision. We have lots of friends in the State House, we have friends in Congress, and they're common sense thinkers as well. Joyce, thanks for letting me interrupt your talk just for a minute.
Thank you. Last Thursday, city managers met with Representative Leek, and we talked with the Governor's Chief of Staff about exactly some of these issues, to waive certain regulations to allow home and property to be protected and be built back. So the Governor's Office is looking at what they can do to ameliorate some of those rules and procedures for the emergency period, so we're optimistic about that. Overall, the casings had about a hundred thousand dollars' worth of damage. Again, roof damage was large amongst that. Throughout the miscellaneous parks, a floating dock at Central Park had damage, a Fortunato Park ramp, and some damage at the tennis center. Estimated at two oh five, these are just preliminary estimates. As you know, the Pace Center for Girls is our city facility that we lease to the Pace Center. But this is an act of God. The roof was damaged, so we will be responsible for that repair. We are, of course, we would seek reimbursement through FEMA. Pace is also actively working to get that center rehabbed. Right now, they are renting our former gymnastics space, so the girls can go to school. They started, I think, Friday last week. They've been out of school. They're just a regular rental agreement there, so we're working on that. And then, overall, it's about a little over a million dollars, we were expecting that we have damage-wise. Again, these are just really back-of-the-envelope kind of estimates, so I just kind of wanted to give you a bird's eye view of where we stand with that. We talked about debris removal, Sean updated you on that. Tomorrow is Employee Appreciation Day. Any of you that could come are welcome to attend. That's at the Nova Community Center from eleven till two. I did want to seek some direction from the commission. Generally, at the first meeting in November, where the outgoing commission isn't running for reelection, we recognize them at that meeting. So with your permission, that's what we would plan to do. Is there any objection to that? Okay, so that's our plan.
I think it's a great idea.
And just a couple more announcements. October 21st is Hazardous Waste Day drop-off at Public Works. Volusia County provides that. You can bring anything from tires to old paint. They actually take it out of your car, so that's nine to two P.M. Senior Games Kickoff Luncheon is October 21st at the Senior Center, so we encourage you to be there if you can, from twelve to two. Movies on the Halifax, November 4th. Are you ready for it? The Goonies.
Yes! Goonies never say that to us.
And the Hometown Heroes Drive-Thru Luncheon. We switched to that in the beginning of the pandemic, and actually, that has been a huge hit with our veterans' population. So we encourage the commission to be there from eleven to twelve-thirty, as you all hand out lunches and thank-you notes to veterans. Our fire department has their giant flag there. It's really a wonderfully patriotic event, and certainly, the veterans really appreciate that. So many of you have done it in the past. Rain or shine, we do it, so... It is November 5th. I don't know what day of the week that is.
It is actually a Saturday.
No, Saturday. Robert Dino? It's a Saturday. Okay, very good.
Saturday.
So it's from eleven to twelve-thirty. I mean, you can come in wherever you want. And then Veterans Day celebration that we're going to have at the Senior Center is on November 10th, which is a Friday. What day is that?
The 10th is a Thursday.
Thursday. So that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have for me tonight.
Any questions for Joyce?
I just wanted to say, Joyce, that Mr. Martin, who spoke in public comment today, thank you, he didn't mention you, but you got the ball rolling on fixing his problem, and I wanted to thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Well, you know, I get misty-eyed, I can't help it. But your Public Works crew really does a phenomenal job. Kevin Gray in particular, Kevin's been managing the Solid Waste Contract for many, many years, decades at least. That's a multimillion-dollar contract, and I will tell you, he kicks butt and takes names. Nobody's pushing him around, and he gets the job done. So I'm very grateful to the water boys, as we call them, who fix the line. The tree crew have gotten many, many accolades this last couple of weeks. I haven't had, through any other hurricane, so many people take the time to write and say, what a great job your staff has done. And I'm really proud of them for all their work. So thank you so much for allowing me to say that.
Assistant City Manager Claire Whitley. Thank you. City Attorney Randy Hayes.
Thank you.
Can we start with Deputy Mayor Persis?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for staying here. It was a little bit longer meeting than normal, it seems like. But I just wanted to mention that we attended the State of the City, all of us did, a week or so ago. And I just want to compliment the city and staff for doing such a fabulous job. On it was just a first-class event. The video was fabulous. I was impressed with all the other commissioners. I think we all, everyone just did a great job. Our city does really shine. I mean, I was thinking, as I was watching it, we have a dazzling city. It not only shines, but we have a dazzling city, and I just wanted, again, to say thank you to everybody who helped make it look so good. I had the opportunity also to attend the documentary. It was the first viewing of the documentary for Mary McLeod Bethune statue that that committee has put together. And it's about an hour fifteen minutes long, but I tell you, there's some footage in there that people haven't seen. It's absolutely fabulous, so if you have time to see it, please, please do it. I know we're going to make it available to the schools, to kids in the schools, to get to see it. So it's really very special. And last night was the Ormond Beach Chamber meet and greet, and they installed officers, and it was just a very nice event at 31. It was wonderful to see people out again. And again, I just hope everybody has a nice evening, and we will see you next time. Good night for now.
Thank you. Commissioner Littleton?
It's pleasantly ironic to see Ormond Beach shine the most coming out of a forty-eight-hour rainstorm. We've done, the staff has done wonderful, our citizens have been gracious, and I'm very proud of what we've been able to do with Hurricane Ian. As far as the State of the City goes, a great event, of course. Our city does shine, and it was the easiest script I ever had to read in front of the camera. I'm glad you guys waited until the last year of my time up here for you guys to do that. But I want to thank the mayor for the key to the city. You know, you did surprise me there, and I'm very thankful of that, and I hope that that key keeps the door codes in there, so I can come in and sneak in in the future. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Selby?
I'm pretty sure they changed those door codes on midnight on the eighth.
The day we're done.
And you don't get the memo on the new codes. So just a couple of quick comments. First of all, yeah, the Main Street Annual Meeting last night was a nice event. It's such a great organization. We're so blessed to have, you know, a historical society, the Main Street, the Chamber of Commerce, the Memorial Gardens and Art Museum. We just have these wonderful organizations that do so much for our city. It's really fantastic. Just tell you a quick story. I had a tree fall down in my front yard, and before the storm, my, well, actually, for a month or two, my wife's been saying, honey, we need to cut that tree down. And I said, Cheryl, it's leaning away from the house. It's leaning towards the street, which is like a westerly lean. And I said, the bad weather always comes out of the north and the east. When it falls down, it's going to fall into the street, and the city will come by and clean up half of it. We won't even have to pay for that. So anyway, so the tree fell down, and, you know, I got probably thirty or forty different tree guys knocking on my door. Hey, I'll take that tree down, and I'll cut it up, and I'll pile it on your yard, you know, for X number of dollars, whatever. And I said, no, no, I'm not going to do that. City's going to come by and take care of that. And then I got my own chainsaw out, and I cut a bunch of the low-hanging limbs, and, you know, piled that up. But I didn't have time to finish it, so I was, the part of it was still laying out in the street, you know, and I felt kind of bad about that. And so I texted Joyce, Ms. Shanahan, and honest to God, within ten minutes... Now, you're either way, way better than I think you are, or the guy was already on my street, okay? I don't know. But, yeah, exactly. I'm going to give you the benefit of, you're way, way better. Anyway, the guy came with this big front-end loader, crushed the limb. I mean, think of, like, two minutes. Kevin, your guy's amazing. Crushed the limbs out there, and, you know, pushed them up in a pile and drove off. And, okay, so my last comment is, I also want to thank you, Mayor Partington, for the key to the city. That was a very, very unexpected, but very much appreciated surprise. Thank you very much for doing that. Appreciate it. And with that, I'll say good night.
Thank you. Commissioner Kent?
Yes, and I'll pick up where Commissioner Littleton and Commissioner Selby left off, and that is the key to the city, and I, too, will say thank you. Wyatt, you know, was born when I was a commissioner, and he's sixteen years old now. He's a smart kid. He's in the Cambridge ACE program at Seabreeze High School. And he let me know yesterday, he got a sneak peek of his grades, and he said, I have six As and one B. And I said, well, not too shabby kid, and we're going to go out and celebrate you for that. And hard work equals great results. I tell you all that, because he looked at the key, and he said, what will this open? And I said, what do you think? This smart kid looks at me, he's looking at the key, and he says, every door in the city. And I said, you're right. I think he still believes that. This smart kid who's in the Cambridge ACE program, that will open every door. And I'm going to leave it. I'm not going to go back and touch it. I'm going to let him go to bed at night and continue to think that that key will open every single door. But thank you for that. It was a very nice gesture. You're welcome. Joyce, I heard you say October 21st Hazardous Waste Day. I am pleased I heard it. Is that being pushed out? Do people know this? Because my mother asks every year, because of my father.
It's the first time it's been back, I think, since, second time it's been back since...
Okay, all right, good. And then, November 4th, Goonies, you know, to Robert Carroll and Joyce Shanahan, thank you for listening. I mean, that's the type of staff you have, is, you know, we talked about, I wish it was the Goonies, you know, they're going to show this movie Scoob, but I wish it was the Goonies. And then you come to the next meeting, and you find out the next movie in November is going to be the Goonies. And Robert and Joyce, thank you for that. The fishing tournament, Travis, I'm so glad that you brought the boys in, and they got their first speaking engagement here in City Commission Chambers. And I'm glad you talked about Ike, and I loved the pictures you sent me. And pun intended, I did mean it, but they're hooked. And then I find out, you know, they want to go fishing the next weekend after the tournament, and they catch even more redfish. So it's a wonderful wholesome activity to do with children, and I'm so glad that you're doing that with your boys. To this day, you know, one of my favorite activities, and Wyatt's favorite activities that we do together, is go fishing. It's a good time. And I'll just tell you, when he was a little, little boy, I tried to take him a few times on Sue Parker's stock. And, you know, like a little boy, you know, ten minutes later, he's bored, wants to go home, so I brought him home. And the next time I went fishing, he wanted to go, and I let him know, you're not coming. And he gave me the tears, you're not coming, because I get there, and it's effort, and I have to set up, and then you want to come home ten minutes later. So I didn't let him come for a while. And I told him, you know, that's why this is called fishing, not catching. So fast forward, a year later, and he's probably, I don't know, seven or eight, and one of his little buddies was spending the night, and he said, Dad, can we go fishing on Miss Sue's dock? I said, absolutely, let's go. And his little friend, after about ten minutes, started getting uneasy, and Wyatt said, hey, Brandon, that's why it's called fishing, fishing and not catching. And I thought, you know, the kids learned it, so I'm glad to see that you're doing that. Two more things. When we built the break wall right out here, I thought, when I saw it, this is kind of low. It should be higher. And I thought, you know, the engineers, they know. And without a storm, I've seen it almost completely submerged. And with the height, with the height... And with the high, with the high water we've been having, and immediately after the storm, it was completely submerged. So new commission, I would look into CDBG funds again and some grants, and I think that that break wall should have more coquina rock put on it, a minimum of two, maybe three feet higher, so that it will do the job that it's supposed to do. And I know that has to be compromised when the water is several feet over top of it, not to mention dangerous for any boater that comes in that doesn't see it, but it's a footer to under the water and they hit it with their boat, it's a, it's a problem. So I just, I wanted to make sure I got that out there. And my last thing tonight is Kevin Gray, I'm so glad that Joyce gave you the mad props tonight, because she, she hit the nail on the head about the hard work you do, and for a lot of people, it goes unnoticed, but I, I learned years ago what a shining star you are in this city, and I'm in my comments tonight saying thank you to you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you. And you have all covered the main points. I just want to close with a letter written to Kevin Gray and also to myself. It says, "Gentlemen, just like all the Ormond Beach residents, I was very anxious and concerned about the upcoming Hurricane Ian causing damage and flooding. To try to prevent damage to my home, I went to the sand piles in the Nova Rec parking lot with my shovel and the empty trunk of my car. It was eight P.M. Tuesday night when I arrived in the dark and started digging. To my surprise, Bill, from the Street Department, came over and not only helped me to fill the bags, but helped put them in the car. I don't think I could have completed my task without his help.